Possibility that if he can't justify, if he can't fit the number of spaces and yet can't justify a variance, then he's gonna be with an empty store or two, whatever it is.
Okay.
Anytime a project has to pull a building permit or get an occupancy permit, they're gonna have to make sure that they adhere to all the zoning code rules that you're gonna have to through a site planning review process as well, so.
All right, I think that's adequate then, in my opinion. The other question I had was with regard to this woman's concerns. It sounds like she's gonna be facing some hardship due to the construction. So something that can be done relative to screening or shrubbery to avoid the situation where somebody's looking out their kitchen window at an air conditioning unit or something like that?
I think that it's gonna be one of those. We have to wait and see how this whole thing gets put together. Masteron has certainly indicated a willingness, as I think everyone, as Mr. Willett has indicated, to be a good neighbor, to get involved with landscaping or things that might help out in a situation like that. I do have to say, however, we cannot forget that this was, that this is a regional retail district here and that these condominiums came in under a variance from that particular situation, so.
I understand. I just, if it's possible to accommodate the concerns.
Well, I'm trying to be accommodating. I had to say the second part, but the first part, absolutely, he's more than willing. He's been a great neighbor to the people that he's dealt with in this thing. I can say that. And I think that anybody that dealt with him and talked with him and discussed this would find that he was a very reasonable guy.
So would you be acceptable to a condition said, you know, that the Masteron should make every effort to provide screening and shrubbery to avoid?
Use his best efforts to help the people with screening.
Right, and we, and sorry, but we had spoken before the meeting and I had mentioned that, that usually the boards like to see some sort of screening or something put in. The situation she's in, and she can speak better than I can, but her unit's three feet off the property line and she's a lower unit. And then we're gonna be three feet off. It doesn't leave too much room for plantings without her losing any green space that she does have presently.
Right.
So I said, we'd be willing, as a condition, to even put in a number of plantings or a certain height of plantings, but I'm not sure that that would work in this case, 'cause then she loses the only green space she has. She'd be looking right out into a bush, but she could.
Well, space-wise, there will be six feet between my building and his building.
Right.
So there really isn't any space for any type of planting.
Right. How about a fence?
And if they have any height, it would take too long.
How about a fence?
There's an existing six-foot-high fence that will remain. But then the top of the building will be, there'll be a two-foot difference between the top of the fence and the top of the building.
I see.
So unless there was erected an eight-foot high.
Maybe even if it's an air conditioning unit screening around the unit or something, I don't know. It's a difficult situation, I understand. But I think if we make every attempt, if we put a condition on there to ask Masteron to make every attempt to screen his property so that it, you know, alleviates your concern, I think that's the best we can probably do.
Can I ask one other question?
Could you speak through the microphone, 'cause some people watching at home can't hear you, okay? Thank you.
My other question was, was any consideration given to the traffic that will increase on Middlesex Street? I mean, that road is already a nightmare. Some days it starts at 3:00 and it's a steady stream from 3:00 to 6:00, 6:30, 7:00 at night. So if additional businesses are placed in there, then it will only increase the traffic on that road. And I mean, once University Lowell starts up right through the end of June and then, you know, you may get a break for two months in the summertime with some traffic alleviation, but once school starts up and all the schools in the city are going, that road some days can have traffic nonstop from 3:00 to 7:00 at night. And also, you know, early morning when you're leaving and going out to work. So I didn't catch what your comment was about traffic or whatever that was, but I don't understand why that would not be a concern, because traffic on Middlesex Street is already very heavy. So I would think additional businesses will only increase that traffic flow. Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah. We did, the city traffic engineer did receive a copy of the plan and he had a couple of questions. I think you received these, Mr. Sullivan? Basically, most of his concerns were on-site and not concerned with the traffic flow on Middlesex Street, even though we do know it is busy. I think he talked about, the two plans didn't match. One plan he had 63 places, the other one was 64. I think you corrected that. I think, I don't know, might be in the handout that you gave us, Mr. Lites? Let's see. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that covers that, yeah. And you talked about the VAN accessibility for the parking. Okay, you have that. Just talked about the handicapped spaces need to be, what size they have to be.
In an effort to make it safer, as far as parking is concerned. Currently, the parking is kind of, as it's been described, just park as you will. And currently, it's all paved in the front of these buildings and cars just park anywhere.
Yeah, because it's indicated that it's not striped in the back of the parking lot and it's.
And that as well. And so this is allowing cars to actually get onto the property prior to the parking and there's no backing up onto Middlesex Street as there is now. So that is.
Yeah, 'cause now mostly everybody parks towards the front.
Right, everybody, and they actually pull right in and back up onto Middlesex.
A little get on the side there and some to the left.
Right.
That's basically what I would, when I observed it, when I went up to decide plan and visit a few times. Thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a couple of questions. How is the trash pickup going to be handled for these businesses? Unless I'm missing, I don't see a dumpster anywhere.
If you look at the engineering plans, there's a dumpster proposed on the, in the rear of the property and it would be a off-hour pickup where it is just adjacent, just behind a parking space.
Is it where the snowstirge?
Not the architectural plans.
Yeah, right there.
Where, can you point that out?
Right here.
Back there, okay. So that's not, is there gonna be any screening?
Yes, definitely will be screening. I can see what you're looking at. You're looking at the architectural rendering that Jim did.
It's easy to spread out here.
Okay. And what we're doing is we're proposing the dumpster to be at the rear of the property, as Jim stated, and it'll be surrounded by a chain-link fence, a slotted chain-link fence with a gate that will lock.
Now, the cooling and heating systems, I guess I wanna verify, are they going to be on the roofs? And is there any screening that can be provided on the, what is, from the mechanics, what is somebody gonna look at, even from the, I'm just a little curious from the.
Right now, currently, the building is designed to have rooftop units per unit staggered right down the length of the building. So there would be one every, let's see, about one every 30 or 40 feet down the length of the building.
Masteron just indicated that he intends to fence or screen those units from the people up above to the extent.
Yeah, because I can just, you know, if you're in the second units looking down, it's just gonna really be a.
Right.
Well, yeah, he's not gonna be able to get them entirely. He's certainly gonna try to dress it up up there.
Right, 'cause you gotta admit, it's a unique situation. I mean, you don't have much separation. You've got the height difference, you've got the different uses, residential and retail. And again, that's where you have a conflicting, whenever you allow residential development in the business area, I mean, you have these conflicting interests here. Just a couple, also signage, assuming these are all occupied, I'm assuming these businesses are gonna wanna have their, have it be known to people traveling Middlesex Street that they're back there. And I don't, just curious if there's any, any thoughts as to how that is going to be.
I think I can answer that by saying that the difficulty, because I raised the issue at this point, whether or not we would need signage variances or whatever, relates to what I said a little while ago. Without knowing who and how many, we won't know that. So obviously, we're gonna have to come back if there's a, if there's anything that's in excess of what the city allows for signage for variances.
So at this time, though, there hasn't been any thought given to that? 'Cause it, you know, it looks nice at the green space up front. And I really, I think, you know, I think it's a tremendous improvement getting rid of that parking in front of the building and putting green space, but I was just a little curious as to, 'cause that could really be very busy-looking.
I'm sure you'll get a chance to take a look at it if we decide on any other signage.
It is proposed at the base of the awning to have band signs under each storefront.
Oh, yeah, I can understand that, but obviously you have to drive into it.
But as far as something on the site, actually, a lot of the sideways strip malls in that area, you tend to have the destination stores at the end, such as a music supply store.
Good example, just down the street.
For example, right. And they're at the end and they're one of two, actually one of one now that Russo's being relocated to provide strings for a guitar, for instance. So that is a destination store. You need to find them on the internet, on the phone book, as opposed to seeing a sign. And they're happy with that, as opposed to up front, like a H&R Block that wants to have their presence known. So that.
Okay, those are all the questions I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Lockhart, any questions?
I just have one on the entrance to the development. On this rendition here, as opposed to that one, I think, and the one we have, is an island in the middle?
Yes, there.
What I'm really interested in, what that's gonna look like from Middlesex Street in terms of landscaping and follow-up on what Jerry said about this potential signage there. If you can just describe that, what you're gonna see.
Okay. There'll be vertical, there'll be an island, a split island, 'cause it's gonna be one way in, one way out, circulation pattern, as you can see. The reason we did the island is there's an existing utility pole that's right in the center there. So the idea was, you know, trying to relocate a utility pole. Where would it go? So we're trying to, and cost, there's a big cost sometimes associated with that if there's transformers and whatnot. So this will be vertical granite curbing surrounding the island and it would be planted or it could be up to the board. It could be mulched with small plantings. Instead of a grassed area, it might be difficult to mow with, you know, and get, you know, who's gonna maintain that.
As long as you're willing to work with DPD on landscaping and stuff.
Yeah, we'd work with, whatever you'd like to see for landscaping, if it was like a mulched bed area with some plantings, like, you know, flowering type things, nothing that would grow high for site distance. Whatever your opinion was on that, we'd be acceptable too. But that was the idea for the center island there, was just to keep the utility pole where it is.
Okay.
Mr. Clermont?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just getting back to the problem that the abutter is going to have, do we have a sense as to what she'll actually be looking at in terms of the height from her unit? Will it be, is she be looking right out the roof or?
If I may direct a question directly to.
Please, yeah.
When you, when you're standing up, looking out your kitchen windows, looking straight out, do you see the fence?
The fence is below my windows.
So you don't see the fence at all?
Oh, I see the fence, but it's below the window ledge, so the building will be above that.
The fence is six feet?
Yes.
And this will be two feet, three feet away.
And your window's above that and the building will be above that.
So she most likely will see, at least half her view will be the roof. And then I don't think there's anything other than the mill that's a good, a couple hundred yards away from there, maybe five, 600 yards down the street that will enter into her view.
Right.
But she won't be looking at.
And I understand everyone wants to use the best efforts to make it aesthetically pleasing. I think it's a difficult burden, unfortunately, for the abutters, or the residential abutters at least. Just a question, and I'm sure you've considered it, but you've got an eight-unit commercial building. Any thought to sliding four of those units down to the other side of the lot, away from the residential building and flip-flopping the parking?
The, if we were to shift the building down, we would have to seek a variance, because in the.
The zone changes in the back.
The IRR zone needs a 40-foot setback.
Zone changes in the back, issue number one. Issue number two, Mr. Clermont, we're actually doing these folks a big favor by taking care of, number one, their encroachment, and number two, their failing wall.
No, I understand that.
And that would be pushing further into.
Where does the zoning change? I see that the red line on the plan I'm looking at, that's the wetlands, right?
No, well, yeah, there's a curved line. That is the wetlands, the 100-year flood line, that we wanted to keep most of the building out of.
Yeah.
And then there's a 40-foot setback in the IRR zone in the rear.
So if you took four of the units, half of the building essentially, you could not slide it to the other side of the lot 'cause of that zoning line, is that what you're saying? I'm not seeing it on this plan, but I'm sure you've looked at it.
Yeah, actually, we looked at this in numerous different positions on the lot. Actually, even had it on the other side and this was the best approach, trying to avoid, hold hardedly, the corner storefront where you end up with a large volume of space with very little frontage of the store. And you can see that throughout the area where Sunshine Plaza on Bridge Street is a dead corner right now with Ames. For, it's just very difficult to rent that corner. Village Plaza and Drakeett, both corners are just utilized as dead space for Christmas gift shop stores and.
Well, I wouldn't be talking, I don't know if we're missing each other. I'm not talking about turning it. I'm talking about taking these four and sliding it straight down.
Putting them behind the units that's already there.
Wouldn't be a corner unit. These four would slide down to the bottom of the site.
Yeah. It's split the building in half.
So put the four behind the unit that's already there.
There'd be four units here and the four units that are directly abutting the residential condos would slide down, the way I've sighted it, to the bottom of this site. You've got it.
The issue is.
Five of these four units over.
Is this, this space here is where her unit is? So it would be, it'd be half the building. And then that would reduce, extremely reduce, the visibility of the building.
It would, again, I'm not following. It would reduce the visibility of what? What I'm talking about is, let me see if I can sight it the same way as you. Right? Here's the residential condos.
Right.
Here's the eight units that you're building. These four sliding over here.
That would not rectify the issue that is being proposed. She has the very end and her view.
She's here?
Yes. And I don't believe that would help alleviate the.
Well, I mean, it would open it up to her and all the other residential units. My question is whether that's been, you know, looked at and whether that's even possible. I mean, just throw it out there as a possibility of something that would make it a little easier for the residential.
It has, I'm sure it has been looked at. This project has been going on for about a year and a half now. And it would put it over into the flood area. Just as you move west to east on this, on this site, there's like a two-foot grade change. So over by the existing retaining wall, the elevation is, let's say, 99. On the easterly lot line, it's 97. The 100-year flood elevation's 100. So if we put a building over on, let's say, the easterly side, even four units, I'd have to elevate the slab grade to at least elevation 100. So there'd be three feet of fill and I had a difficult time just getting my flood compensation to work with this design being on the high side. In fact, I had to be pretty creative how I did that, doing what I did under the building.
Okay.
But that was, basically, I mean, when I got hired on, I was given this layout, but just when you were speaking, it seems to make sense to stay on the high side where we're in a flood plain.
Sure. All right, thank you. I have no other questions.
That's what happens, Mr. Clermont, when lawyers try to become engineers.
Well, I didn't say I was an engineer. It seemed too simple to me.
For explanation?
No, I totally sympathize with that. I asked a couple of questions like that too, but it doesn't work.
I have no questions at this time. Most of my concerns were addressed by questions of the other board members. So having said that, any board members, any further discussion? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve. We've got a few conditions, I think, that haven't been agreed upon. I'll refer to the two sheets that council handed out. One entitled Conditions Agreed to, excuse me, with Commons Condominium, numbered one through five. We can incorporate these as an agreement between the parties that they'll incorporate. And secondly, the applicant gave us a response to the department head comments addressing the comments that were given to us by the department heads and I'd like to incorporate all those as conditions, as agreed. I think in addition, the applicant indicated that he was going to physically remove the snow when needed with his insufficient snow storage, that, in that he would continue to work with the condominium association to alleviate their concerns as much as possible and use whatever best efforts the applicant can use to screen, especially the rooftop area, so it's as aesthetically pleasing to the residential condos as possible.
Second that motion. Could we, Mr. Chairman, could we just add one condition? That they would also, the applicant would work with the DPD on the landscaping on the island. I think appropriate material.
You incorporate that in your motion, Mr. Clermont?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, do you incorporate that in your second?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So we have a motion made with, one, two, three, four, total of, I have six conditions. You got six, Alan? Am I doing okay on those? One would be the, well, the two sheets I have, there's one each.
Right, okay.
And then the snow.
Yep.
Work with the condo association to screen the rooftop, okay? I wrote that down as two pages. I've just one then, and then DPD. So I have a total of five.
I've got all of those, yes.
Okay. Mine went up, I had a run-on sentence here, so I picked up another one. Any further discussion? A motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote, yes. Anybody against? Hearing none. Vote carries, 5-0 in favor. Good luck.
We certainly thank you very much for your input.
Good luck. That concludes the public hearings. Moving along, on the agenda, we do have matters under new business. We have nothing scheduled on new business. Any board members have any ports on new business? Hearing none, we'll move along to, we have the planning board meeting scheduled to be reviewed and approved. We did have this previous, at the last meeting at two, and I asked if we could continue it out. One of the concerns I have is April 21st happens to be a holiday and we have that listed as a Monday. That's Marathon Monday, which is, I believe, Patriots Day, so the city hall will be closed. So on that, April 21st, which is known as school, that's basically school vacation week, so usually would have that meeting on the following Thursday.
You're planning to run, Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me?
Are you planning to run?
No.
Scary.
So I just know that we're closed that day, so I want to make sure that that was, I checked that, so that would be moved to the following Thursday, which would be the 24th. Also looking along, I know Thursday the 21st, just so people know, that is during school vacation week. So that's usually, we pick up that Thursday and the same with the April schedule. That's school vacation week, so we pick up that Thursday as well, if anybody has concerns. So.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a concern on that February 21st meeting. I won't be here.
Okay. That's why I pointed that out, I know it's school vacation week. I remember last year.
February 21st.
Yeah, February 21st. I remember last year, we, actually, I think, Mr. Chairman, you were away and I was away as well, so actually, we had nothing on the agenda that evening, so we canceled the meeting and continued it. So just, usually when it falls in the school vacation week, I like to bring that up. The other matter is, we have a meeting scheduled for St. Patrick's Day, March 17th. I have no problem with that. I don't know if the board members have any conflict with St. Patrick's Day. Depending on the public input, I don't know.
We've had them in the past.
I know it's a very busy night in the city. Maybe it won't be as busy as it is here tonight in front of us, but just things I highlighted. And the other question I had is, September 15th, that's the meeting I couldn't make last September 'cause I donate my time to a charitable golf tournament for the benefit of our high school. I'd request if we could have that one on the Thursday as well and put that over to the, I think it's the 19th. So the only corrections I would have is if we could put the 21st over to the 24th and the 15th of September over to the 19th. I don't know if any of the board members have any other concerns.
No, I had none.
Saying that, do we want, can we adopt this as our schedule and obviously we can tweak it if we have to, if things go wrong? Okay?
Ooh.
So move second. Okay, all in favor of that? Thank you.
So just, so I have it right, just those two dates, April 21st to the 24th and then September 15th to the 19th.
So on those two, the Mondays, we'll pick up the following Thursday, okay? Everything else we'll stand there now. And if anything comes up, we can approach it in the future. Okay, moving along, we do have notices from abutting town. I'll look at the motion, place it on file.
So move.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye. Motion passed. General Carles Ponses, do you have any, any board members? If not, we'll move along to the zoning legal notices. These are matters, I know we just received them tonight because planning developer didn't get them until late, so therefore, with the bear with us, going through a few of these matters. And these are the matters that are gonna appear before the zoning board of appeals, scheduled for January 14th, 2008, at 6:30 in the city council chambers. Appears to be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven matters. And we can just take these one at a time. The first matter is for a petition for variance applicant Patricia Deeley, which is located at 20 Genus Ave. This is a traditional single family to construct a rear deck within the required offset of the principal building to an accessory structure garage according to section 4.3.5 of the code. Request relief replaces an out-of-code port and provide better access and use per yard, as the applicant requested.
2.1 feet.
Mr. Chairman, it doesn't really encroach on anybody else's property. It's only, you know, seeking relief from closeness to her own garage, so. I would move that we recommend approval.
I'd second.
Motion made in second, from approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Next matter is, this is a petition for a special permit in variance. Applicant is PV Lowell LLC. The property is located at 122 Western Ave, also known as 150, 200, 250 Western Ave. And this is petition for the construction of a live workspace unit within the Otis Overlay District according to section 9.2 with the variance from the required parking accordance to section 6.1.4. I know this matter's been before, it's on other matters in the overlay projects, so we're kind of familiar with the layout over there. So looking for a variance in regards to the parking.
Relief needed 48, oh, God. That's exactly half. That's tough.
that exceeds requirement of the zoning ordinance. You don't see that one too often.
Is this an appeal of a building department decision?
Yes, okay, it is. It goes on, it says, yep, you're right. Appeal of the building decision. So this must be...
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we would not issue a decision on this. I really do think this requires hearing the petitioner and getting some input as to what exactly happened here.
Okay.
That was just my thoughts, because this is following a complaint, so I'm sure there's a story that goes along with this.
Yeah, definitely is.
At this point in time, motions, do we make no recommendation on this matter?
Second, a motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the recommendations, we have no recommendation without hearing the specifics of the appeal from the building commissioner. Moving along, the next matter is Basilla Pollock on 10 Wyman Street. This is a suburban single family, to subdivide a lot, maintain existing structure, and construct a single family with insufficient lot area, lot area per dwelling unit, and minimum lot frontage as required by the zoning code.
Chairman, I recommend we deny, recommend denial. We're violating multiple constraints there, so I'll make that a motion.
Second, a motion.
Motion is made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Recommendation carries for denial. And the last matter is North Kendall Properties, doing business as Burger King. This is the matter that just came before us. It looks like they're going before the zoning board of appeals for a drive-through and the insufficient parking. We did approve the matters, so I'd recommend approval with the conditions that we imposed earlier. Sound good enough?
That, Mr. Chairman?
Motion is made in second, that we approve the Burger King with the conditions that we approved as a result of the public care. I think that concludes our agenda this evening. Any board members have any further comments or concerns? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned, and everybody, and thank you very much.